Ten o'clock? I'm ready.
We've been called to order for the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting. It is Thursday, January sixteenth. A bit of echo in here. Twenty twenty-five, it is ten AM. If you'll stand for a moment of prayer. We have Reverend Al Thompson to give us a prayer on his birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy New Year to everybody. Let's fire him. Father, thank you, Lord God, for allowing us to see another year. Allow us to begin this twenty twenty-five year. Thank God we come to this meeting with our leaders within this community. We ask for your direction. God, whatever it is that you're doing within our county, Lord God, we don't want to do it without you. So I ask God that you bless this meeting, bless our year, bless the effort that we have to make our county a greater place. On behalf of Jesus' name, amen.
Two remain standing and repeating. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May they see that? Right now, we will call for public comment on agenda items only. So if anybody would like to speak, you can come to the podium, state your name, and what agenda item you are going to reference.
We gotta do something with this sound. Is there a way of turning down?
It's this one. Hello? Is that better? Better?
Yeah. Let me hit this one and see if it changes anything. Testing. It's echoing, right?
All right. We will try to be loud for you. Is this better? So right now, let me repeat. It is now time for public comment on agenda items. If you would like to have it, to speak on agenda items, come to the podium, state your name, and please state what agenda item you wish to speak about.
And you have three minutes to speak. Right?
Hello, I'm Donnie McCarty, resident of Fayette County. This goes on the agenda item because part of the agenda is you all accepting last-minute's agenda. Okay? So, last meeting, you all sat there.
Excuse me, Donnie, what number, though, on the agenda?
What agenda?
What's it pertaining to on the agenda?
Years' old approval of last meeting's minutes.
Okay, so that'd be under the Commissioners' agenda.
So last meeting, you all sat here, and we had a full house. You listened to a multitude of residents state their displeasure with the mismanagement of funds and the need to increase our property tax by twenty-six percent. That's a hefty charge to anyone. I have never gotten a twenty-six percent pay increase. I don't think hardly anybody in here has, except for maybe government officials. You all sat there, you played on your phone, you rolled your eyes, you had side meetings, and you totally disrespected the taxpayers of your county, my county. You did not heed anything that we said. You all came in here already deciding you were going to vote for it or not. You all need to start listening to the people. There was an election. Donald Trump won because he wants to make America great again. I would love to see Fayette County be great again, the way it's headed, it's not. We're spending, spending, spending. Another thing, these trails have had to end. Okay? Sheetz Skin, thirty-four miles, that would be seventeen million dollars. Yeah, it's grant money. Grant money is taxpayer money. That was my money at one time. Okay? Enough with the trails. You can go from Cleveland to Washington DC through one end of Fayette County to the other on these trails that are already there. You can go to Ohio Powell, hike, bike, do whatever you want. The people in Ohio Powell, the Christian people, wanted to upgrade their trails through the park. States had no problem. However, horses were not indigenous to Fayette County. So every dry bridge, every dry creek, every white creek, they had to build a bridge across it at their cost, not at taxpayers' cost. People want to bike and hike, pay for it yourself. Thank you very much. Please listen to us.
Anybody else? We will go to item number four, which is proclamations. In this month, we are proclaiming it National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And Andrew is here from the Crime Victim Center. If you want to come up, Andrew.
So this is a very long proclamation. I'm going to try to break it down a little bit. It is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and crime that harms the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities, often across generations. In nearly twenty-five years after passing the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, an estimated twenty-seven point six million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, with cases reported in every United States state and territory. This can happen to anybody, but certain populations are at greater risk, including those who are affected by abuse, violence, and poverty. In connecting the dots, strengthening communities, preventing trafficking underscores the need on how to understand how human trafficking relates to other forms of violence and how we can prevent it by strengthening protective factors at the individual, relational, community, and societal levels. We, the Fayette County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-five as Human Trafficking Prevention Month, reaffirming our commitment to connecting the dots and strengthening communities and preventing trafficking. By increasing awareness, improving education on human trafficking, and making resources available for people and communities impacted by human trafficking, and building diverse public-private partnerships to support a more coordinated, comprehensive response to prevent and combat human trafficking. Signed today by the Board of Commissioners, myself, Vincent Seaves, and Dave Roy. And we want to thank you for coming. We want to thank you for all that you do for our community as well. So if you would like to have us talk.
So behalf, Fayette County has the Fayette County Human Trafficking Task Force. So on behalf of the task force, Fayette County Children and Youth Services and the Crime Victim Center of Fayette County, we want to appreciate the Commissioners and the work they do with our organizations in bringing awareness to the community and want to put out there to the community that if you suspect or you have seen something that you might think could be human trafficking in nature, please reach out to your local law enforcement. We do have Homeland Security that we work with, the FBI, state and local law enforcement, working on issues and things that we've seen in our community. Just in the last two weeks, we've had two incidences that have been reported or being currently investigated. It happens everywhere, and you know, we want to bring that knowledge and information to the communities so that you're aware of this. And so we do appreciate your support. If you want to join our task force, please reach out to the Crime Victim Center or Children and Youth Services. We are the co-chairs for the task force. If you'd like to join, attend our meetings, know what you can do for your community, or if you'd want us to come and speak at a event you're having, or a church function, or a social organization that you have, and you'd like for us to come and bring more awareness to you and your members, please reach out to us. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Would somebody be willing to take a picture, too? Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. We're down to number five, the financial condition as presented by the County Controller, Rob Rhodes.
Good morning. I submit to you the January twenty twenty-five financial report. In the general fund, a cash balance under the general ledger, we have three million forty-four thousand six hundred fourteen dollars and nine cents. Twenty twenty-five revenue, our budget is fifty-three million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Year-to-date, we have utilized five hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Our expenditures for twenty-five, our budget is fifty-two million one hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and thirty-three cents. Year-to-date, we have utilized two million two hundred and three thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents. And so far, due to the general fund, we have seven million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Number six, Behavioral Health Administration.
Consider approval of the following agreements and modifications. Under Health Choices Amendment Number Two, twenty twenty-five, Living Complete Technologies, Inc., under Modification Agreement Number Two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Chestnut Ridge Counseling Services, Inc., as listed.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to promptly move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number seven, Buildings and Grounds.
Consider approval to advertise for bids for the sale of a twenty fourteen Chevy Impala as-is with rusted frame.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to promptly move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to accept or reject bid twenty-four dash zero eight, the purchase of county vehicle tires.
Is there a motion?
Move. We actually have to make a choice.
Yes.
So I make a, we did get two bids for tires for the county vehicles. Both of the bids were more than we can purchase through Co-Stars. So I'm going to make a motion that we reject both bids.
I'll make that. Yeah, you make a motion on second. So the Co-Stars is cheaper, is that what you're saying?
The Co-Stars was cheaper than both bids that we got.
Sizable, some size tires.
Okay.
Co-Stars being a cooperative purchasing arrangement that the state bids, and we're able to piggyback on, for people to remain on.
Is there, so the motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number eight, Children and Youth.
Consider ratification of a fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four memorandum of understanding between Fayette County CYS and Fayette County. The memorandum of understanding establishes the basis for a relationship between CYS and Fayette County whereby Fayette County may receive Title IV E reimbursement of administrative costs associated with the independent legal representation of children, youth, and/or parents in dependency proceedings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, purchase of service agreement addendum between the County of Fayette through CYS and juvenile probation and Kids Peace, four zero eight five, Independence Drive, Schneckville, PA, for residential and foster care services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, purchase of service agreement between the County of Fayette through CYS and juvenile probation and City Mission Living Stones, Inc., Promise House, one five five North Gallatin Avenue, Uniontown, PA, for the Independent Living Program. The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, memorandum of understanding between Fayette County CYS and Fayette County. The memorandum of understanding establishes the basis for a relationship between Fayette County CYS and Fayette County whereby Fayette County may receive Title IV E reimbursement of administrative costs associated with the independent legal representation of children, youth, and/or parents in dependency proceedings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to upgrade the HVAC controls through Combustion Service and Equipment Company, CSNE. The proposal for the Fayette County CYS building includes removal and replacement of all the existing KMC controllers, installing new DDC controllers, and room temperature sensors for the air handler, number one, a hot water system, and reheat coils, web interface with graphics, new communication wiring to each control panel, ATC drawings, and submittal, DDC startup, eight hours of training, one-year parts and labor warranty on all new controls and installation. The total cost for the HVAC controls upgrade is thirty-three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. The company is a Co-Stars vendor with number one four three zero two eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Number nine, Human Resources.
Under Commissioners, consider ratification of the permanent layoff of Kaylee Glaze, Community Relations Specialist, due to the elimination of the position effective December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under CYS, consider approval of the resignation of April Caldwell, caseworker one, effective December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Second.
Motion is promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the resignation of Alexandria Coff, caseworker one, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the resignation of Megan Raymond, caseworker two, effective January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Under Election Bureau, consider approval of the promotion of Linda Ridgely to Department Clerk Two, SEIU, Pay Grade Five, Step SR One, fourteen dollars and thirty cents an hour, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars annually, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Second.
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the promotion of Jane Emery to Department Clerk Two, SEIU, Pay Grade Five, Step A, fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents an hour, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars annually, effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under EMA, consider ratification of the promotion of Andrew Kelly to Dispatcher Two, SEIU, Pay Grade Twelve, Step SR One, twenty-three dollars and thirty cents an hour, forty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars annually, effective January twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Second.
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under fact, consider approval of the separation of employment of George Sarai, full-time bus driver, effective December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Adriana Ottavania, full-time bus driver, CDL, SEIU, Pay Grade Fourteen, Step SR, eighteen dollars and seventy cents an hour, thirty-six thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars annually, effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration, consider approval of the retirement of Patrick Morrison, Mental Health Program Specialist One, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for votes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the resignation of Edward Dugas, caseworker two, effective December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the resignation of Diana Merrill, County Caseworker One, effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of the promotion of Carlos Curry to Technology Generalist Administrator One, non-union, Pay Grade Forty-five, Step OO, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour, seventy-two thousand nine hundred ten dollars and fifty cents annually, effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Under Veterans Affairs, consider ratification of the retirement of Perry Russell, van driver, effective January third, twenty twenty-five.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number ten, Office of Tax Services.
Under Tax Claim, consider approval of the following repository bids opened on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, subject to all conditions being met. The total bid amount is one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eleven, Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Consider approval of a design proposal for Phase Three Dunlap Creek Park Trail. Gibson Thomas Engineering will complete tasks associated with the project not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Attached is the letter of agreement. Local share account grant funds were awarded to Fayette County and shall be used to cover this expenditure. Gibson Thomas Engineering is at twenty-two hundred University Drive, Suite One, LaMont Furnace, PA.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries two one.
Consider approval of Keystone Acquisitions' cost estimate for right-of-way acquisition of properties in Georgia Township, Fayette County. There are three parcels involved. Local share account grant funds were awarded to Fayette County for the purpose of covering this expenditure. A total estimated cost has been provided by Keystone Acquisitions at an amount of twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Attached is the cost estimate. Keystone Acquisition Services Corporation is located at thirty-two hundred McKnight East Drive, Suite Three Two One Zero, Pittsburgh, PA.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries two one. And then number twelve, Commissioners.
Consider approval of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Commissioners' Agenda Meeting Minutes.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Commissioners' Meeting Minutes.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to award the twenty twenty-five Tax Revenue Anticipation Note, TRAN, to United Bank in an amount of nine million dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Just to add to the motion, the interest rate from United Bank was the lowest at four point nine eight percent. Does that show the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the following transfers that occurred in the twenty twenty-four budget through January sixth, twenty twenty-five, with debits and credits of eight hundred dollars.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's promptly moved in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number thirteen, Public Announcements. Hearing none, we will go to number fourteen, Public Comment. Just as a reminder, you will come to the podium, state your name. There will be three minutes. This is not a Q and A session. We are asking for public comment. You may ask questions. If we know the answer, we may provide the answer. We may not know the answer to your question. So with that, we will start the public comment period.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Gino Gallant from Collinsville, Fayette County. Thing I wanted to comment is on the nine million dollar trans loan that you just borrowed. I'm glad that you decided to add the interest rate into the motion. But I want to do, I'm a little concerned because as I read that motion, I look back at your motion regarding that that you passed back in for the twenty twenty-four TRAN, and the wording was quite different. I'm a little concerned. Bear with me here. So for the last TRAN you did, you had, the motion read, "Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of the county nine million dollar tax and Revenue Anticipation Note, Series Twenty Twenty Four, pursuant to Local Government Unit Debt Act and its award to a local bank pursuant to competitive proposals received on December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three." Today, you just read that you had awarded it to the bank. Is that decision just being made arbitrarily, just by you three guys, without putting it out to the public? And I would like to see the TRAN note, and also, I'd like to see that made available to the public without going through a formal write-down request. And Dave, yourself, at the last meeting, you discussed the nine million dollar loan acquisition through the bond that we got, that that money would be transparent and would be watched. How can we view that? I mean, because it seems to me, I listened to Rob's report on the way in the controller, it seems that that money was just rolled into the general budget. So I'd appreciate it if you would answer those both questions.
Are you talking about the loan that we did at the end of the year?
Yeah, the nine million, not the TRAN, through the bond. You mentioned that that was going to be transparent, and we could see how that was getting.
That was actually fifteen million.
Okay.
And those are basically general expenses and the things that we need to do to keep the county in operation, is what that was for.
And none of that was for anything outside of the scope of running the county government?
Correct. Correct, correct. We did have to roll the last year's TRAN for twenty-four, the balance of last year's TRAN into that loan.
Okay. And then my other question, to simplify it actually, how did the United Bank get selected? What was the process?
There is a firm that we use consistently. It's been, ever since I've been here, we use the same firm. And they do a bid process. They go out and they do find banks that will participate because the banks don't, you know, they just, it's ones that want to actually work with us. And then we evaluate what the fees are in those loans, along with interest rates. And United Bank on this round actually does work best. Now, TRAN is something that the county has been taking out for years upon years upon years, and it's to cover the gap from January first until we get the tax revenues in from our tax collections.
Okay, I know, for whatever reason, you guys weren't able to do that last year.
Yeah, we did.
You did, and there wasn't a default? There was no extra interest or penalty paid for not living up to terms?
We did not default on that TRAN.
No, we did not.
And if I could go back to the money that was borrowed late in the year was specifically due to the fact that we are, have not been getting the reimbursements from the state through CYS. If you could look at the Controller's report today, total due from CYS is seven million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. We've had to front that money from the general fund to the CYS fund, and that was what, as we get reimbursed now from the state, that amount of money, we can go back to pay off the loan that we borrowed at the end of the year. We did not also, we did not draw down all fifteen million. We only drew down eight million dollars. So that's the plan with that particular loan.
That is a drawdown loan. That's not something that we're getting charged interest on before now.
Until you borrow it.
Until we borrow it.
Okay. Thank you.
We've been getting a tax anticipation loan for many years. Before I even became Commissioner, they were getting, until the tax revenue came in, because we don't have a large surplus. The county doesn't have any kind of funds they can tap into so they get the tax anticipation loan. It's been happening for probably decades.
Many counties do.
Yeah.
Only the ones that have large reserves are able to avoid that. Other municipalities too, school districts, and sometimes cities do as well.
My name is Gina White, and I'm from Franklin Township. There's been discussion around the potential reassessment of properties because of the discussions of LH wanting those assessments done. I was wondering where we're at with that and how soon we can anticipate something like that to happen.
Are you talking about a reassessment?
Yeah, like the process, because there has been rumors that LH is anticipating on pushing the issue of having those accomplished. And my concern is, the school district last year raised the taxes, and then the county obviously had to in order to do what they needed to do. And then I noticed on the draft of the new agenda for our upcoming meeting, there's another tax increase, and so I'm concerned about what that's going to do as a taxpayer in terms of us having our properties reassessed and having to pay more in taxes as a residual effect of that.
So first, Lorhans, to my knowledge, has not taken any action.
There have been no suits filed against the county.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
But I do want to make this a general statement then about, not with that situation, but just with reassessment in general. If we reassess the county, it is revenue-neutral to the county. So the county cannot make any more tax revenue after reassessment. The amount of revenue that the county gets after reassessment has to be the same as it was before the reassessment.
But that decreased, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
The county doesn't make any money from the property, the properties being reassessed. Now, what might happen is, what the reassessment is designed to do is to equalize values. So maybe your property is assessed very low, you may get an increase.
Right.
Maybe somebody else's property is assessed high, they may get a decrease.
Right.
Somebody else's property may stay the same.
Yes.
And so individually, there is going to be this up and down, and some people would see a tax increase, some people would see a tax decrease, but ultimately.
A third, a third, a third.
A third, a third, Gary.
A third goes up, a third goes down.
A third stays the same.
Okay.
And then we are not permitted to make any additional money from that.
Okay.
So there's really not a lot of incentive for the county to go through the expense of having a reassessment at this point.
There's two minor exceptions to that.
Yes.
One, you get a five percent leeway, you can have five percent increase. And the other is, you can go to court to get court approval to go higher. It's rarely done.
But as a general premise, it's revenue-neutral.
It is revenue-neutral. And that's the intent of the statute, that it be revenue-neutral overall, not to particular properties. In general, not having a reassessment hurts the poorest people.
Okay.
Generally. That's not always the case, but generally.
I guess like my concern would be, if my property was assessed at a higher value, and then all of these incremental increases in taxes, the millage, or however you pronounce that, what that would do in terms of me personally, I guess, you know, as a taxpayer? Because if they've already increased the millage, and then my property is assessed at a higher value, that would then indirectly increase my taxes, correct? Am I wrong in thinking that?
No, you're right.
And so like, I guess, in terms of millage, if they're, they keep increasing the millage, how, you know, that's going to detrimentally affect, I would imagine, a lot of people.
So after the reassessment was done, there would be a new amount of property value in Fayette County, and we would be required to adjust the millage.
Okay.
So that our property, our tax didn't go up.
So we're, okay.
Right.
Okay, that addresses my concern.
Because the millage is the multiplier.
Yes.
The denominator to multiply, so that comes down if the other number goes up.
Okay.
And the reassessment in two thousand and three, base year, cost around two million dollars to do.
Okay.
If we did a scratch program and did it the same as we did back then, and twenty-plus years since that, would probably be double that or more and more.
You're probably looking at five million dollars of revenue needed coming out of the general fund to actually do a reassessment. So it's another one of those things that you've got to pay attention to, because that comes out of the pocket, and if the five-million-dollar price tag goes on the reassessment, where's it come from?
Right.
There's been a closely-watched case out of Allegheny County. The school district of Pittsburgh filed against the county there to try to force a reassessment. But so far, it has gone nowhere. It's been dismissed because the argument being that the school district didn't have standing to make that claim. It could be easily got around. An individual school board member could bring the case, but it's a politically difficult thing for anyone to do. But if that law actually holds, you're not going to have school districts being able to do it in their name.
So that would be an individual.
It's been in the papers. The trip is reported on at the Post-Desert, but so far, it hasn't had any impact.
One county that borders us hasn't done a reassessment since nineteen seventy-three, West Merlin County.
Okay.
So they're thirty years prior to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
I'm John Marietta. The reason I'm here, I want to give you some brief history lesson here today, because I am the reporter of deeds, and I looked all this information up, and I want you to understand some things that happened here in Fayette County. In seventeen ninety-one, right here in Fayette County, our farmers took a stand and said, "Enough is enough," when the federal government slapped an excise tax on whiskey, a tax that hit small farmers the hardest. The people didn't bow their heads. They fought back. And at that moment, known as the Whiskey Rebellion, became part of who we are. Let's be honest, the rebellion wasn't about whiskey. It was about freedom. Fayette County has always been a place where hard-working folks draw the line at unfair taxes and government overreach, and today, I'm here to remind you that the spirit of those farmers isn't buried in the past. It's alive right now, and you're starting to stir it. They believed in limited government and accountability, and that's what we should believe in also. They stood against unjust taxes, and we're also going to stand up for this now, too. They fought, their fight laid the foundation of defending liberty, and we haven't forgotten that. You sit there today because the people put you there, we think. And yet, when the people asked for something as simple as changing the meeting times to better serve them, to let their voices be heard, you shrugged it off. You taxed them relentlessly, but the idea of moving a meeting to accommodate the public is too much to ask for. It's not just disappointing, it's disgraceful on your part. The farmers of seventeen ninety-one didn't rise up because they wanted to cause trouble. They rose up because the government wouldn't listen, and the same feeling is boiling beneath the surface right here today in Fayette County. It isn't a playground for power-hungry politicians. This county belongs to the people, and it's about time that gets acknowledged. You may not think a simple meeting time matters, but it does. Every time you disregard the will of the people, you chip away at the trust that holds this county together, and I can promise you, that trust won't break quietly. Since seventeen eighty-three, Fayette County has stood as a symbol of grit, hard work, and defiance in the face of government overreach. The Markey D. O'Fayden didn't fight alongside our forefathers so future leaders can ignore the will of the people. He fought because liberty is worth standing up for every time. Today, I'm standing here for the people of this county. I'm standing for those who can't make these meetings because they're out working to pay the very taxes you collect. I'm standing for those tired of being brushed aside by the very government that's supposed to serve them. It's time for you to listen. If you Commissioners won't take the voice of the people seriously, then don't be surprised when these voices start to grow louder. Fayette County has never been a place that backs down, and that sure as bloody hell isn't going to start right now. Here's to two-hundred-and-forty-two years of standing tall and to the many fights for the freedom that lies ahead.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Nobody has their hand up online, right? Okay, is there a motion?
I want to, I want to say something that I think was not, was not brought out at the last meeting because of all the discussion and the public comment. We tried to listen to people. We didn't really get a chance to talk about all the adversity that we had to deal with, with this tax increase, you know. We didn't, I mean, it was very difficult to do that. I've not done it many times in my career that I've been a Commissioner, but I, there was no way around it this time. And I just thought I'd let the public know about some of the expenses that we had to deal with in making this decision. Many years ago, there was a lawsuit called the Menchinsky Lawsuit. That was something that happened before I was a county commissioner and anybody up here, but we had to pay that to settle that lawsuit. The state paid double what we did, but we were charged with, because the county at the time didn't have any liability insurance, we had to end up paying, that was back in the mid-seventies or early eighties, I believe, we had to end up paying four million dollars, is that correct, for the whole, the total suit?
We paid three million. Ironically, the last payment I put in the mail yesterday, the five-hundred-thousand dollars, but we paid a total of three million to the plaintiff as the settlement amount. We also spent at least another million on the defense of the case, because we had to pay for attorneys, expert witnesses, so it was well over a million dollars. So total, in excess of four million dollars, in addition to the time for me and Commissioner Lor went to some mediations in Pittsburgh with me, so yeah, it was quite an expensive matter. It involved a wrongful prosecution and something that we, the county government has no control over at all. It was the state police prosecution prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office, but under the law, we're responsible if something goes wrong. And because of the type of the case, we did not have any insurance coverage, so that money was paid out of general fund months, funds.
This is something that happened prior to any of us being here, but we had to deal with it, and that took a big hit on us. The other, the next thing I want to mention is, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen, the former Board of Commissioners did not contribute to the county pension fund, and back then, it was about eight-hundred thousand that needed to be contributed. So we, this particular budget, based on our actuary studies, we were required to contribute more to it because we hadn't done it for that four-year period, and that was four-hundred-thousand extra dollars that we had to contribute. Our health insurance at the prison, we have to unfortunately fund that, and it went up six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars from the previous year. Our health insurance in the county, we have, for all of our employees, went up four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars from the previous year. And we got hit by inflation, just like everybody else. We, our last general, true general fund tax increase was two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and twenty, we primarily, it was for the voting machines and the debt service for the prison. During that nine-year period, inflation went up twenty-seven percent, and the CPI also went up twenty-seven percent. So, you know, that's, I mean, that, across the board, raises the price of everything that we have to account for in our budget. We also could not get nine-one-one dispatchers because other entities were taking them because the salary was too low, so we had to increase that by four dollars an hour, and that was quite steep amount of money from the previous year. And prison guards also in the same situation. We had to increase their pay that started this January by four dollars an hour. Those two increases alone in our union contracts was a big hit financially, increased our expenditures. We've had a lot of litigation with the election, you know, the mitigation, our legal defense was costly, tens of thousands of dollars there.
We also had litigation in regard to the new prison. While we were in the process of getting it designed and built, the ACLU brought a case against us that we ended up settling. There was no money paid other than attorney fees, but they were expensive, over six figures to the ACLU, as well as to the lawyers that we had to pay to defend us in that case as well. So that was another expense that we had, on top of the cost of the fifty million dollars to build the prison.
Well, it was less than fifty.
It was forty-seven, so.
I rounded to fifty, but.
Okay, well, stop rounding, because you know it happens when we round, then we were told. And just to go back to the.
We had major expenses. That's what I wanted to try to convey, major expenses to deal with in this budget. I'm sorry.
And the decisions when it comes to the employees, first off, we are chastised because we don't pay our employees enough, and then we're chastised if we pay them too much. You know, our employees, we were putting training classes through for nine-one-one dispatchers, and as soon as the class was over and they would become nine-one-one dispatchers, they would go to the city Morgantown Police. They would go to Washington. They would go to, they were being poached, so we were training them, and boom, they were leaving. So we had to increase their pay. And the last class, we had eight in the class, and we have eight graduating, and we have eight starting soon. Part of that, the savings there is, I don't have to pay the overtime to all the other dispatchers for nine-one-one. Public safety is crucial. That's one of our, one of our primary functions, and, you know, for us not to have nine-one-one dispatchers, or nine-one-one dispatchers that are constantly being mandated overtime, wasn't financially smart, nor was it prudent from a standpoint of public safety. So there's that. The, our prison corrections officers were also being mandated overtime, and they were being poached by the state and federal correction systems, and we, it was either, you know, increase their pay, and all three of us agreed that this had to happen, increase their pay, and we increased their pay four dollars an hour to start. That's, this year, about a four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar increase in their pay. And it was either that or continually having to mandate overtime. And, you know, so we're trying to be, when it comes to the. trying to be, when it comes to the, the, our, our employees, it's something that we have to do. And, you know, this is something years ago, you know, years ago, you, when you had a county job, you, your pay wasn't that high, but you had great insurance, and you had a job for life. Well, now, we're trying to get people, we have to compete for labor now, more than ever, and it's happened over the last four years, where it's very, we struggle to keep employees, so we have to compete for labor, and that's something that, again, that we've never had to do.
If you think about the prisons, I mean, we're surrounded by other prisons, we have SCI Fayette, obviously in the county, but we also have Waynesburg, SCI Waynesburg, we have the federal prison in Morgantown, we have the federal prison in Hazleton, just across our border, and we have the state prison in Somerset, so literally, there's state and federal prisons all around that can take our people once they're trained.
I can tell you, as far as the jail goes, is that the mandates cost, I believe, over six hundred thousand dollars last year, so even though it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the budgeting side for the wages for the, for the COs and for staffing, it's still, I guess you'd call it still savings, because it was over six hundred thousand last year on the mandated side of it. And the mandates are pretty tough on this personnel too, because there's been times when they've been doubled and tripled on mandation to make sure that the guards state had to, they had to be there. And so it's, it's one of those things, I did absolutely agree with that in the nine-one-one increases, because you're just going to keep them, even the state police would take guard nine-one-one dispatchers. So those were things, and that's, those are things that you may have already used, in the sense of nine-one-one, or may hopefully never have to use, but it doesn't seem like it works that way. So it's one of our responsibilities to make sure that service is always up there.
So we got hit with major, major expenses that we had to figure out how to balance a budget with, that typically don't come up so, you know, so drastically in any given, you know, from one year to the other, it was very difficult, and we did the best we could.
I want to say something. You got it, you got it here, my name is Paul Schumke. You're talking about the lawsuit, right? I had cancer in fifty-eight, as you well know, your insurance only pays twenty percent. Nobody helped me, but I got through it because I budgeted. Now, you're saying about this other stuff, about the taxes, and you have this, and you have to raise this, like I'm telling you, when you raise taxes, where am I going to get the money? I'm seventy-one years old, a little hard for me to go to work, and like I told you before, I had everything set up, I have four oh one, I have all that, but you guys keep moving a goalpost and tell me how tough you have it. Inflation hit me the same, it's just not as, you've got big numbers, I got little numbers. You get a lot more taken in, I don't. So you sit up there and tell me this stuff, but I'm just not buying, thank you.
I just wanted to let the public know what, you know, because that was never discussed at the last meeting, and as far as the sheepskin trail, we've never used fund, we've always tried to avoid using the general fund to match anything, so we really haven't used the general fund for the sheepskin trail. We use grants, and we match with grants, and, you know, that trail has really been good for Fayette County, and, you know, we're trying to get it built, and we're trying to do it cost-effectively.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Motion's probably moving seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.
Chris sent me three copies of everything.
I want to do one.
We have to sign that.